May we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz.
There.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
For the short term.
Thank you. And may we, John, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you, John. And so, welcome to the August 24, 2021, meeting of the Ojai City Council. We have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, and we have one public comment on this. Meg Goodwin, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, Councilmembers. I just wanted to put in an in-person appeal about our request during the general plan update to have our one block of North Montgomery Street rezoned from commercial to village mixed use. It's just 11 properties on that block, and we're surrounded by VMUs. So it would make it much easier for all of us to live and work. So that's that, because I couldn't zoom in a couple of times. So thank you for considering that. And also, I just want to put in my two cents about the bike thing, that it would be nice if we could continue the bike path across that front area of Vons, where the Christmas tree is, you know, that grassy area. Seems like the bike path could go there and then have a stop sign at the driveway by Vons, and then continue the two-way bike path separated from the traffic, so that it's a legal two-way bike path. Thank you for everything you guys are doing. Good luck.
Thank you, Meg. So we'll begin our joint session. Any public comments on Zoom, Gail?
No public comments.
Okay, thank you. And just a reminder, this is our first joint session in two years. So thank you, everybody, for being here. It's pretty exciting. We are very happy to get back to normal, sort of normal. And we're going to be discussing five different topics from the Planning Commission. And so, thank you, Planning Commission, for being here. And we will slowly, in the next couple of months, meet with all the Commissions in joint sessions. So it's a wonderful opportunity for all of us to work together and actually see each other face-to-face. So it's pretty exciting. So I'm going to hand it over to James, who's going to talk about the general plan update.
Thank you. I just wanted to do a quick, a couple of quick comments about the general plan update, because I know that that was identified as a topic by the Planning Commission. I think it's a topic that is one of the large projects that we'll be working on over the next 18 months or so. So we have provided, everybody should have this handout in front of them. And we just kind of wanted to, I know a couple of the questions were, you know, which element should the Planning Commission focus on in tandem with the general plan update? And then there was the general plan update and the affordable housing topics. So we wanted to kind of start by stating where we're at. And so, one thing you'll note in this flow chart is there is some red line. And the red line reflects the timelines, kind of the revised timelines. Obviously, COVID has not been super cooperative, and it hasn't been a great opportunity for us to have these large public workshops we typically would have. So the timeline has been somewhat impacted by that. But you'll note by this that the first phase of the general plan update was the listening and learning portion, that box that says, "Review existing policies and reports, identify issues and opportunities." And that was, we had a strength, and strength, weakness, and opportunity workshop. That process began in winter of 2020. We completed that process and moved forward with the visioning, developing the long-term vision and the guiding principles for the plan. The Planning Commission had reviewed that general plan vision and guiding principles document and refined that a couple of months back. And that actually made its way to the City Council and was adopted last council meeting. So you'll see the original dates for those was spring of 2021. That is now spring, summer of 2021, but it was adopted in August. And so, we'll be moving forward now to the plan alternatives phase, where we will create and refine land use and transportation alternatives. That was originally scheduled for summer. We're going to be starting that in September. So it's a little bit of a postponement. But all things considered, considering multiple public workshops that we had scheduled and had to kind of reschedule and then move to Zoom, I think that it's, it's, it's been postponed a bit, but it's not out of line with, I think, what we would expect due to COVID. The plan alternatives, just to lay it out, we are planning to bring specific areas forward where we've heard a lot of conversation about, so that the Planning Commission and then the City Council can really dig into those areas. And one of them was just mentioned by the public comment. It's the Montgomery Street area, which there's a lot of comments coming from all the different workshops about the future vision of what Montgomery Street can and will be. And then the other area is the Bryant Street industrial, Bryant Street, Bryant Circle industrial area. So that is the portion that we are going to be working on through fall of 2021. And then, in the meantime, at the same time, the housing element that the Planning Commission just reviewed is going to be coming to the City Council on, I believe, it's September 14. Okay, so September 14, the housing element will come to the City Council. So those are going to be the two kind of overlapping parts of the general plan we work on over the next three months. So we just wanted to lay that out to kind of set the stage for the general plan update discussion. But with that, of course, we're happy to take questions. But with that, we'll turn it over to the Mayor and the Chair of the Planning Commission, Chair Quilisi, to lead the discussion on the topics.
Chair Quilisi?
Yes, I'm here. I'm, I'm in Texas at the moment, a trip for family business that could not be rescheduled. And I regret not being with you. But Vice Chair Nolan will handle whatever duties are, would otherwise be required of me, because she's there with you. My only other regret is that John Trent joined the Planning Commission a number of months ago, perhaps a year ago by now, I'm not sure. And we have never seen each other live. We've been Zooming all this time. So I look forward to the next meeting in which we can actually say hello and look each other in the eye. But Vice Chair Nolan will take the lead from here for the Planning Commission, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair Quilisi. Can you hear me? Okay? All right, good. So I just, I just found out that I was the Chair a couple of minutes ago. But I, I think I'm okay, and everybody can help me out as needed, hopefully.
You'll be great.
So basically, these are the items that we had discussed at Planning Commission, the tree ordinance, Title 10 update, the water-efficient landscape guidelines. And then generally, we just kind of went over the general plan. James Vega just went over that with us. And then affordable housing. And I would say that our general discussion, especially with the tree ordinance and maybe even the water-efficient landscape guidelines and affordable housing, typically, we have projects that may have one of those elements in them, and there potentially is an issue. But the other thing, too, and I'm specifically referring to the tree ordinances, we have noticed in our packet, not every meeting, but on a regular basis, there are a lot of tree removals going on. And a lot of it has to probably be due with environmental issues, but they're all permitted. But it's kind of a, we've noticed it as a red flag. It's something where we keep bringing up and going, oh, my gosh, we're losing a lot of our trees. And from our perspective, generally speaking, we look at the trees as a resource for the community for carbon sequestration, slowing down water, part of the hydrological cycle, shade, lowering the evapotranspiration rate, beauty, et cetera. So, so that's kind of where that came from. And then with the water-efficient landscape guidelines, we did look at that. I want to say it might have been about four years ago with one of our past community development directors. The Planning Commission did provide input, which actually was incorporated into some of the city guidelines. But I believe Commissioner Trent, I know you, you have brought this up, and we've, you know, generally discussed the concern about fire and water and how that relates to landscape. So our general discussion was, does it warrant us to go through, kind of vet it again, and provide input and recommendations, which, of course, all of this would go back to City Council? And of course, you would, provided you directed us to follow through with that. Title 10, we've been working on, but I think that's, that would be more of an update. And Chair Quilisi, if you wanted to pipe in on any of that, please do so. And then, of course, affordable housing, because, yes, we've been working on that, and that's part of our general plan update. And we understand the affordable housing, or the housing element had time constraints when it had to be submitted. But I, one of the biggest things that I think we discussed was, I shouldn't say I think, but I know we discussed, was what's, what's the, the vision coming from City Council as far as housing goes? Yes, there's one thing that we are required to have a housing element, and we have the rain and numbers. And, you know, we know that those numbers have been adjusted, and they're a lot less than they used to be. But, you know, we continue to hear from the general public and, you know, just on the street about the housing shortage. And we kind of wanted to see if there was some direction from City Council as far as, like, what's the overall vision? Is it just to meet the rain and numbers, get it done, because we have to get it done? Or are we really trying to provide? I know we don't have to build, but we have to indicate that we have properties, you know, available in our housing element that potentially could be developed. I'm going to open it up to my fellow Planning Commissioners, and if you would like to add to anything that I've just said, if I've missed something, or if you want to contribute. And then maybe we can then open the dialogue up. Does that work for everyone? Okay. Do I see any comments, Kathy Lottis or John?
I just want to say you did a good job.
Oh, okay, good. On short notice, yeah. And Chair Quilisi, I'm not sure if you heard everything, but if there was something you wanted to add right now before we open it up?
Thank you, Vice Chair Nolan. The, the, I would like to mention the, the Title 10 cleanup, if you will. It's a lot more than cleanup. But Lucas and I, as sort of a precursor ad hoc committee to the Planning Commission, have been going through Title 10, line by line, first cleaning up inconsistencies and other errata of that sort. And, and we're getting down now to where there are real policy questions that we need to bring back to the Planning Commission for recommendations to you. With the pandemic and, and other things that caused short staffing in City Hall, we've seen some delays in that. But we both hope to be able to bring back more substantive policy questions, both to the Commission and then subsequently to the City Council. So looking forward to getting back into that routine. All the rest of what Kathy Nolan said is spot on. We're really looking for guidance from City Council. Tell us what you think it's important for us to work on. And if we give you a list of things that we think are appropriate for us to work on, then we're looking for you to give us your priorities amongst those various issues and tasks. So that's, that's where we are, and that's what we're hoping, at least in part, to get out of this meeting tonight.
Thank you, Chair Quilisi. So at this point, I think we'll hand it back to, to Council and let us know how we can interact as needed.
Maybe a good idea, just go, there's five topics identified. So just to open up a topic and, and get Council feedback.
So on housing? So I would generally say that we just talked about the general plan, so we probably skipped that one. So basically, we have the tree ordinance, the Title 10 update, the water-efficient landscape guidelines, and then the affordable housing. And in a way, the tree ordinance and the water-efficient landscape guidelines might have some overlap or could almost be done jointly, potentially. So is, does Council have a preference where to start, or we can just start at the top of the list? Randy?
So when I looked at this list originally, I thought it was Planning Commission's priorities. Obviously, I'm wrong. You didn't, you didn't list a priority. You just listed five things that you'd like, some input on by Council. Am I correct? So, so I'll drop the assumption of tree ordinance is number one in the Planning Commission. And you're looking for guidance as to what should be number one. And personally, the general plan update and anything that has to do with the general plan for the next six months, if not a year, should be, it should be the number one priority for this Planning Commission. And the reason that I say that, there's a lot of information to digest, but more importantly, there's a lot of information, information to disseminate. The public needs to know what we're doing, why we're doing it, how it might impact them, where it will impact them. And we need to be able to bring the public in more. In some of the sessions that I've been in and I've watched, there's not a lot of public input. We need more. So to get more, we need the Planning Commission to have it agendized at every meeting, have some form of discussion, some form of action you might want to take. But more importantly, some way to communicate to the community what we're doing. I would start there. And if you have time to do anything else, God bless you. Go with God's speed. But this is probably the most important, the most, the most important aspect of community, is who we are, what we are, where we're going, and how we're going to get there. And I think it's real important that we recognize, and the Planning Commission recognize, that you're the voice in the ears, as the Council is. The 10 people that sit on Council and Planning Commission were the venue where all of this is going to be vetted. We just need to recognize that and realize the importance of it.
A question for James. When is the next public meeting? Is it scheduled already?
The next, like, the next public workshop for the general plan? So we were working on that. So we had shifted back to scheduling an in-person meeting. And we were feeling pretty confident, but that has now been canceled. So we are working on scheduling a virtual meeting. I think we had said late September, early October. So in the meantime, the housing element's coming to the City Council September 14. So that's the very next step in the general plan, or, you know, in the, an element update at the, at the City Council. But then there'll be a public workshop about a month after that.
Great. Well, I agree with you, Randy, getting more people involved and in the know and knowing what's happening. And from my, you know, the, the Zoom meetings were pretty well-attended for Zoom meetings. You know, we had 100 people at one, which was great. Still, we need, you know.
100 out of 7, 7,500, that's, that's the concern.
Actually, you know, according to the consultant, that was a really, he was really impressed with the number, considering, you know, the percentage of our population that showed up, considering that it was on Zoom, too.
I'm not, you know, I'm grateful for who participated. But when I'm getting paid $650,000, I'm going to tell you it was the greatest meeting that I've ever been a part of. But aside from that, I, you know, something else that might work, too, Mayor, is having the Planning Commission like we did the first time that we were here at Libby Bowl. And maybe we need to figure out how to stop Zooming and start interacting and start having more of your commission meetings here when you can and, and moving forward as you can. We'll get more participation from there if they know that we're meeting here for them to be a part of it. When we are in a closed room or a closed environment, especially right now, it's, it's difficult. But this is, that first council meeting was incredible.
Excuse me, you can still zoom in if you don't want to.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
But, you know, if, if our first, our next general plan public workshop is late September, early October, it's still good weather.
Yep.
You know, it gets dark earlier, but it's.
You know, I don't, I don't want to hog all the time, as I normally try not to do, but do sometimes. But this is one of the arguments with the ATP, believe it or not, is there wasn't enough public meetings. And the reality is, we probably conducted 25 to 28 of them. Most people didn't know or, or didn't want to come down and, and participate. And that's the downside to that. When it comes to your, you know, that's one small aspect, how we're going to redefine some streets in, in Ojai. But to redefine how we plan and how we live and how we grow, how we develop, how we come together, this is, this is incredibly important. So we need more participation, more.
Are you suggesting we have Planning Commission meetings at Libby Bowl?
Absolutely, Steve.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah, and, and at least that public workshop, maybe late September, early October, at the very least. That would be great. Might pack, pack the bowl.
A fall setting at the bowl.
Yes.
You'll love it, Steve. It's great.
Oh, I'd be happy to do that, sure.
Commissioner Lottis?
Just to follow up with that, yeah, I, I totally agree that I'd like, I mean, with the housing element, we didn't have time to really get into policy, particularly new policies. And I really felt that that was lacking, because that really is something that we could have taken the housing element further to really address specifically with this community needs versus what the state is looking for. And so, if, if we can work in more workshop types of forums where people feel like they, they have an opportunity to say something and they can talk about what their, well, what the issues are, what, you know, sort of where they see us going for the future, because we are looking at the next 20 years for the general plan. And in particularly, particular, I think we really need the time for community input and vetting and discussion and of policy, as well as the, so that we, we can look at the existing policies. But in addition to maybe, you know, taking those and crafting those, those a little bit, we can look at adopting, creating new policies to deal with our future challenges. So I, I say, here, here.
May I have a turn? I think the public is most of all interested in what is stopping us from implementing certain things. Like today, we received another letter from Gloria Valladolid about gray water. We've discussed it for years. And it's, my understanding is that she wrote that California allows gray water from my washing machine to my landscape without a permit. The county of Ventura allows the same. And she says, "Ojai should do the same and should immediately move to retrofit city facilities to use gray water." And does the public understand what is legal and what is not legal, and how they can go about implementing? Because this is completely related to the, to watering trees and our landscape and the geologists that we're in a, in the, in a drought. So I think the public would like a report on that. That's just one of many things. Also, what's stopping us from taking an inventory of empty buildings? And, and what's the word, retrofitting, redesigning them to become housing? You know, what is stopping us from doing things that, at least in the eyes of the public, seem logical when we're in a crisis mode with housing, for example? And as far as, if the Planning Commission is looking for direction, for a vision for housing, I would, I would, I'm completely in support of the climate housing policy recommendations that I think everyone received today. There's nine, it's laid out, nine policy recommendations. And I don't know if the rest of the Council is in favor, but that would give the Planning Commission some direction. Perhaps some of you could speak how you feel about those nine recommendations.
I saw, I, I would totally support all nine of them. This was an email that went out earlier today?
Yeah, you know, I briefly got to look at it. I was working, and then I had to leave before this meeting. So I didn't thoroughly vet it personally. But, you know, maybe it's something that we bring back. I'm not sure if everyone had a chance to go through and digest it. I mean, generally, I would say yes, but I, I think that would be a smart way to, you know, for everyone to have a chance to look at it, and then we come back and go through it. But it does relate to housing, and it was directed, you know, as some possible climate solutions that tie in with housing.
May I make one more comment, Mayor? Let's see here, Kathy, who was ever in charge. I can't see, so.
Go ahead.
I can go ahead. I would say the other critical thing to convey for us to be aware of and to convey to the public is that you cannot isolate one part of the general plan. All, every single problem is intimately connected. And the more you see that, I think the greater our ability will be to move forward, to resolve these problems. You know, there, there are, it's all connected, transportation, housing, water, fire. It's, you know, we have to look at everything as a whole. I mean, I know that's been said, but I can't, I want to underscore that. So, so important. And if there are things like with the tree, or if we're losing our trees, I mean, it, it's, it's just as important as the general plan. Some things are, need immediate action. The general plan is super important, but if there's something that needs an immediate attention, we have to zero in on that. If there, you know, if, what, I, I forget what you said, Commissioner Nolan. It's a red flag when we have multiple, you know, multiple trees dying, and we need to find out what's going on. That's critical on every level. So I don't know what you need from us in order, you know, to, to zero in on the tree ordinance. Do you need two of us to work with two Planning Commissioners, for example, you know?
It's actually already in our work agenda. Have the tree resolution come back for review. That's.
Oh, that's what we need.
We're, we're actually years behind doing that and months behind the Council directing that that come back to us.
Oh, perfect.
That's already in the work for.
Oh, could we, could we get a copy of the work agenda?
The Community Forest Management Plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's in process.
That's already, we already directed that to come back to us, and we all weighed in with comments. Some of us did, some of us didn't. That's been months since that's, that direction was provided by Councilors, waiting for it to come back to us, really.
Okay, so there's a Community Forest Management Plan and the tree ordinance, which, you know, are related to one another.
I've never seen the work agenda, so it would be really nice to see what we're supposed to work on.
I'm just, I'm just stating for the record that the, the Community Forest Remanagement Plan had a recurring review period, which we did not meet, we're years behind. And we, some of us have put in comments about that, and we're hoping that it gets back to us. But that is a, that is a work progress that's supposed to come back to us very soon.
Along those lines, something else that came up at Planning Commission, I believe it was a couple of meetings back. And it has to do with, you know, what does City Council want us to do? And, you know, what's, what is the work plan or the big vision? But in the past, we had a list of things that, that Planning Commission generated. In other words, like this list that we have here. And of course, it would go to Council, and we'd have to wait for direction from Council if they wanted us to look at it. But we also had essentially the work plan from City Council, and it would always be in our packet. So that way, we knew what was going on at City Council and that it may be coming to us or not. But it kind of kept us in the loop. And I think that's kind of part of this vision, is like, we need to, to be dialed in a little bit more. And so, possibly reinstating that, calling it a procedure, but it's something that staff would provide and get it back into our packet. And likewise, it might want to go be in, in the City Council, so you kind of knew what, if there was anything coming from our end.
Good idea.
Possibly. Yeah, it's a communication tool.
We do have one more public comment that came in a little late, so it's a little out of order, but that's okay. Bill Miley, please?
Hi, for the record, my name is Bill Miley. When Councilwoman Suzie mentioned gray water, jarred my. When Councilwoman Suzie mentioned gray water, jarred mine. My thoughts, this is not new. But if you read the LA Times today, I think it was today, we're in the extreme red zone in California, which is, you can't get any worse. So I know Oxnard's been doing recycling of their wastewater for some time. I think we need to really seriously get involved in that because we don't have any new water. And I know there's the issue of Steelhead and the Ventura River and there has to be a certain amount of outflow. But we better look at that. I suggest the Planning Commission push it and the City Council. It seems to me that it would be great to take advantage of what happens in the press like today and have the City Council say something or the city manager say something to all the people in Ojai that were working on the drought issues and water and hook it into what they saw today. Because it's really that. And we have lots of people's attention right now, so I think that we should do that. Also, I would suggest you consider having entertainment at these meetings to get people to come.
We're not entertaining enough? Come on! Actually, that's already been discussed already, so.
I thought we were the entertainment.
Thank you, Bill. You're the entertainment.
We get criticized for being entertaining sometimes in the wrong way.
So just a comment. So basically, I would say like the tree ordinance and the water fish and landscape ordinance or landscape guidelines, those two really tie into gray water. And I will say that I know the city of Ojai does have a link to the gray water laws, which I believe we're still following the ones with the county. But yeah, so that is on the city website. But it is something we could look at more with the landscape guidelines, you know, potentially. And I do agree, I mean, as I said at the beginning, you know, it's all tied into water and fire and, or should I say no water? Or lack of water. Limited water. So, so there's that, but I guess we'll turn it back over to council for more feedback.
Just a couple of comments that have already been touched on by Vice Chair Nolan and Councilperson Francina. And that is that I think it's important to draw a distinction between the general plan principles and specific policies implementing those principles or programs. So for me, like when we were talking and you touched on it and Suzie did well as well, we're talking about the forestry management plan, where we're talking about sustainable landscape, we're talking about stormwater capture. We're talking about sustainable ecology and the different ways that contribute to sustainable ecology. And so I would, I would hope that we could have a general plan that articulates these principles at a fairly high level, that then we can have a, some guidance as to being consistency. I'll give another example, for example, giving what we're learning more and more about the nature of the aquifer below the city only amplifies the importance of trying to do stream flow restoration, stormwater capture. And in terms of reengineering our hardscape, that relates to the water levels. It relates to the ability to protect ourselves with fire hardening, landscaping. In terms of the sustainable issues with our urban forest, in terms of water management, carbon fixing and fenestration and as well as the overall more, you know, you know, it's interesting, we now have research showing that your mental health is enhanced by having a sustainable urban forest. I mean, these are things that are becoming more and more, you know, tied together in a very objective sort of metric way. So for example, when we're talking about a tree ordinance, we should be looking at the healthy ecology of our urban forest, not just trying to have more counts of trees planted. I think there's a distinction, that's a particular distinction I want to make. So I would hope that we could find ways of articulating a sustainable ecology in the general plan that gives us guidances to consistent policies implemented.
Well, this is great.
That's my point of view.
That's your point of view and I, well taken and I tend to, and I do agree. And I will say, back to our Planning Commission discussions before this meeting about wanting some guidance about, you know, the overall vision, but when we have talked about the general plan, we, some of the question we have brought up is, well, how is climate and the ecology and the environment going to be addressed in our general plan? Is there going to be a separate element? Is it going to be interlaced and everything is connected, similar to what you said, Councilmember Wirick? Personally, I would hope that it is. But we would, we would love to hear that and I know that no matter what we do with any of these, you know, tasks that we may take on, it would be good for us to know if that is behind it and the City Council is behind that and that's a direction you're giving us.
And I can only express myself and I'll see the floor in just a minute, but to me, multimodal transportation, stormwater capture, sinking recharge, how we manage our urban forest, those are all connected in terms of sustainable ecology. And so it's hard for me to see how you, you put out, you know, climate change, say, in a separate silo when it's really part of a sustainable ecology that is interwoven through everything, but that's just my point of view.
Well, I agree with you 100%. We just need to hear from City Council what direction you want us to go in. And I know generally as a Planning Commission, we've tossed it around and we're hoping that's the direction. But at the same time, we work for you, so that's part of the reason we're here tonight.
Right, I'd like to see climate change woven into every single aspect of the general plan. You know, we're in, it's code red, the planet is on life support. And I would imagine that most of us have looked at the new, the UN report. And even if we pivoted today and made, you know, made great choices, we'd still have 30 more years where the plants can get hotter and things are going to get worse. The science is all there, so every, every, everything we do has to take that into account in terms of mitigation, adaptation, resiliency. It's a different world now.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, it's, yeah, all of it is, is the sum of the whole. It's all important. My understanding of the general plan is it's our vision and that the nuts and bolts are what we do in our commissions and what we do in our committees. Am I correct in that assumption? Would anyone disagree with that? So the general plan is a pretty, the general plan is a pretty, is a pretty broad ranged view of our community.
Well, the general plan actually is more than that. It is vision, but it's policy. And the policies lay out, lay out all the things the city actually wants to take action on. And, and the zoning and other parts of the municipal code actually are the implementing. But the policy drives everything that the city should be doing.
I understand that, but these are broad strokes of policy. They're not, they're not finite.
They should be pretty specific and they should be action driven.
As much as maybe some would like them to be, but they're not finite. They're pretty, they're pretty broad and they're broad for a reason. So that a community can be inclusive and not dictated to by individuals. That's what I'm trying to say. So anything and everything that we do has to bear the weight of the community, not just a part of the community or a small part of the community. And I think that's important in any discussion that we have on general plans, that, that you just, you just can't build a general plan in a silo to fit the need of one specific group. That the general plan is for the community. That's why I'm saying, Kathy, we're not disagreeing. What I'm saying, what alls I'm trying to say is, it, it's not a fine line. It's a little thicker pencil. And I think we need to understand that and then we come back and have the policy debate, the code debate and all of the things that make the plan work or function.
But the policy should appear in the general plan. That is, that is part of the general plan and it is driven by the community discussion and input. But it needs to be, it needs to be understandable. It needs to be pretty clear about the actions that are, that are necessary. So it's not written like a zoning ordinance, but it should be pretty directive, in my, in my opinion. Successful, other communities that have very successful general plans where they're used daily have taken that approach. So I don't think it should be too general because then it's, then in terms of what is really meant is not clear.
Well, I don't disagree. Like you said, maybe we need to change the term general and make it finite. The finite plan. This is the way it shall be because we have declared it as such. And what I'm trying to say is, it needs to be inclusive, it needs to represent the whole. And how we achieve that, we achieve that through the other side of it. And that's through your zoning, that's through your planning, through your building, through your writing of your ordinances. So it's interesting, we could write a whole new general plan and then take that plan and have to take it back to building and have to take back the planning and redefine all of the, all of the elements that we're discussing here. And I'm just trying to say, when we do that, that's when we actually get finite. That's when we actually can take Suzie's gray water and we can take a landscape ordinance and actually harden it, making it more defined and give it more. Yes. So I think, I think we gotta, I think there's, there's a little bit of difference here, that's all, not much, but that's all I'm saying. I don't want to argue with you.
I'd like to get a word in if I could. One of the things that Vice Chair Nolan has, has tried to bring out, I think, in asking for guidance from the City Council, and it would be good to get that task list back in front of us. I think one thing that she is saying that we have all said at one time or another on the, on the commission, we are a resource for the City Council to do the things that you see necessary. We are not the only resource. Let's take a look at the gray water, for example. Planning Commission would, I think, be properly positioned to say, you need to keep that gray water on your property if you can. How you get that done is a matter of building standards and you should be able to call on your building appeals board to look at those aspects, Title 24 of the California Administrative Code, and see what needs to be done with Title IX in the municipal code, if anything, to implement that same philosophy. So while we are ready and willing to take on any tasks that you have for us, you have other resources as well. And in some cases, like many of those nine suggestions in the email today, I would contend that they might be better dealt with by your building appeals board while we worry about zoning and land use. Thank you.
I'd like to say something about housing. I'd really love for the Planning Commission to focus on housing for very low and extremely low income households. And well, of course, we need to meet the numbers. You know, the word affordable is, you know, that's a tough word and it's not really used that much anymore. So what do we mean when, you know, how much does a person make and how much is the rent? And, you know, it should be about a third of that. And how are we gonna, how are we gonna make that happen? Because, you know, we need that, we need equity. And I mean, that is, I hear that every day. So that's the question.
Yeah, and I think the challenge is, you know, and especially with the housing element, you know, we're identifying, you know, properties and going through a vetting process that would potentially be sites for quote unquote affordable housing. But as far as the Planning Commission, I don't know, creating a program or something, I don't know, I think that may be out of our boundaries of something that we would actually do. But I know that we consider that and we take, you know, it's in our discussion and we're aware of it. I may be wrong in saying that, but I think I might be in the right direction there.
I think it's even, it's within the council's discretion, as it should be, to say there are places in the city that, that should be available for affordable housing. But as we all know, the reina process doesn't require anyone to build anything. Specifically, it doesn't require the city to fund the building of anything, which in these tough financial times is a good thing, I think. But I think we should go as far as we can to make it possible for affordable housing to be built in Ojai. That's fine. We still need to keep in mind that affordable is a legally defined term. And when you say affordable, you have to include to whom and where, because the numbers are all different in every case. So let's, let's take some aspirational goals, but keep in mind that achieving aspirational goals, like so many things, requires other people's money. The city doesn't have a lot of that. If, if people who are in a position to develop housing wish to do it, we should make that possible for them. I don't know that it's within the city's powers to require affordable housing be built anywhere in particular by anyone in particular. So let's, let's keep in mind the limitation of our power in achieving aspirational goals. Thank you.
Well, Mayor Sticks, I noticed Councilmember Blatz had his hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner Nolan. I agree with you. It is an interesting question. And I have to admit, I've been on this council for a while and I have no clue what our housing policy actually is. We say we want affordable housing, we say we want to do anything. I've heard the word crisis, emergency has to happen, but then we get presented with a plan and we say, no, too many people, not enough water, too much traffic. So I don't know. You know, we, we, I don't think we can figure it out. I don't think we have a clear indication. And I don't blame the Planning Commission for struggling to figure out what the heck it is we want. I personally am not afraid of the city's population getting back to 8,000. 500 more people is not going to have an impact on water and traffic that I think is so significant that I think it would change the character of town because we had 8,000 people in the town for many decades, for at least a decade that I lived here, and it wasn't a significant change in the way things were. But I don't know if my colleagues agree with that. The public seems to be a little fickle on this as well. This came up in our, you know, tiny home discussion a couple of weeks ago. And of course, we were, we're trying to add a new idea and bring in tiny homes, but the idea that they suffice to really make any dent in a real meaningful way in the housing crisis is, is a farce. I don't believe it's significant. We're only adding, at least under the current proposal, 10 a year at most. The idea of apartments, which are the tried and true, tested, easiest way to do the most affordable housing and the most efficient space. The problem is we usually don't want it. We usually don't want to go multi-story. We don't like it for whatever reason it may be each individual time, whether it's, again, traffic, fire, whatever reason we come up with. And that is the only way with the cost of land in the city of Ojai to even start to consider something that would fall under any part of affordable or low income or very low income. And now we're talking about having people roll in stuff on their backyards that's not going to be very cheap anyway into something that's almost uninhabitably small, doesn't make a lot of sense. And it's not going to be somewhere where we're adding families. And we can see the canary in the coal mine with this housing issue being the massive downturn in population, the student population in our public schools. And I think we're asleep at the wheel doing anything about it. I think it continues to be a problem. The fewer students we have, the less money the school district has, the unhealthy our community is. We have the, you know, one of the longest average commutes, the lowest average income, highest average age. All of these factors that are fundamental in town scream that there's things that need to change in policy specifically around housing. But as soon as we're given an opportunity for something that's bigger than, oh, here's three units on a tiny piece of land and we're not going to let the people have cars who live there, that's, that's ensuring a lack of affordability and their ability to, you know, upscale mobile, economically, to be mobile. And it makes absolutely no sense in my mind. We're cutting one leg out from under them and then trying to do them a favor. So I, I can't figure it out for myself. And I think that this council's got to come to a point where we're willing to make a really tough decision. We've called the climate crisis a crisis. We had an emergency or, you know, an urgency committee, and, or, excuse me. committee, and, or excuse me, urgent, emergency committee for climate, but we talk about housing the same way, we don't have a committee for that. I guess that is the Planning Commission, but even, we're not giving enough direction to say, hey, this is what we want to do. And clearly, following the RENA requirements of zoning open land to be able to be affordable isn't getting it done, because we know that it's not cost effective because the land's so expensive in town. So I, I'm with you, I mean, this is a really difficult one. I think we're going to continue to push this city in a direction of high cost of living, lower population, tougher school districts to make, you know, to have funds to come in to make them quality, because we're not doing the things necessary, because as Ojaians, we don't necessarily want that, even though when we talk out of the other side of our mouth, we call it a crisis.
Thank you for your comments. I hear you. You know, it, it is interesting, and it may be, you know, it may be that we have some committee or you can take a deeper dive into this, because I think it's really important to, to address it and, and to tackle it, it probably is a better word. But part of the solution may be a multitude of things. There's affordable housing, but then there's affordable housing by design, and, and I know that tiny homes are not the answer, I don't think there's anything that is the answer. I feel like it needs to be a variety of things that are available, including possibly, you know, maybe our commercial zoning, some of it gets changed to VMU so that there's live work, but there's, you know, a multitude of opportunities out there. I think it's more identifying what they are and then, you know, coming to agreement that, that yes, this is the direction we want to go in and we do want to provide housing for the city. But yeah, well, but thank you, much appreciated.
Yeah, I thank you, Ryan. And, and we all, and the data says that the only solution to this, rent stabilization and a living wage. That's what, which is different, you know, we're not talking about building anything or making anything, so.
May I ask one last question along these lines? Do we know how many, I may have asked this before, so forgive me, but are, do we know how many empty buildings there are in the city limit that would possibly be suitable for housing? Buildings that have, have stood empty for a long time? Could we have an inventory of that?
We have, we have a vacant, uh, building list that we keep, and there, there's not very many, I think it's four or five buildings and not all of them are, I think it's less than 10.
Yeah, and not all of them are suitable, so we could come back with that, but it's there's not
Because that's something we, it seems like we could do quickly and it wouldn't, you know, it would be low impact, affordable, possibly.
Unless the city's gonna
Purchase the building.
All of those are privately owned.
We guys are gonna say, it's either public or private. Public, publicly, we might be able to do something, Souza, and privately, we can't tell anyone what to do with their property.
No, but maybe they don't realize they could convert if the, if they're not able to lease the buildings for commercial.
Possibly the zoning could be looked at, and that's kind of what I was referring to as the example of, there may be some areas where it, right now, it's, for example, just zoned commercial, but it could be rezoned, say village mixed use, and, and, and in that case, you know, it could become residential and at some stage down the road, if things change, could actually go back into commercial, but it would have that flex zoning to kind of accommodate the needs, you know, over the next so many years. Yeah. But, or something like that could be looked at. So I, I think I heard the tower bell. I'm not sure what our, our time constraint is right now and
Yeah, we
I just heard the bell tower.
I did too.
We should wrap up. I think, I'll note, I think what, I think I heard some consensus to start agendizing the general plan updates on regular, regularly on the Planning Commission meetings, for the workshops to be in person at the bowl and to develop the, to, to bring back the work plan and have the City Council approve it and then have that, those in the Planning Commission packet. So we'll follow up on those and then I'll let you guys wrap up.
Can I add one thing? Drought, drought tolerant policies and the landscaping? Thank you.
Oh, pardon me, what was that?
Adding drought tolerant policies in the, in the water efficient landscape guidelines.
Yeah, they're there, but they would just, they could be further reviewed and vetted and, and maybe updated because things keep changing.
What, what we'll do is, when we bring the work plan to council, we'll have recommended items and then the council can add or remove and then that'll go forward to the Planning Commission.
Could you include in those items some wording about artificial lawns? People seem to think those are part of conserving water, but they don't realize what it does to the soil, to the bugs, and it creates heat, it creates, the plastic creates heat, it doesn't cool off the way that real, not necessarily lawn, but real plants do. I think we, we need to have some education component in that list.
I think, I'm sorry, just, I think the number one issue with synthetic lawns is they're a petroleum product.
Yep.
That's why my son is dead set against them.
Yeah.
And hated when I put mine in. But they do offer a lot of other benefits than the ones that you're saying are not benefits. So I understand that. Again, that's a balance that we have to look at in anything we write and create. I'm not sure we want to get into telling people what they can do and can't do on their front yard. There's a, there's a fine line there.
I was just gonna, but they need to know the pros and cons, and due to advertising, they only hear the benefits, they don't hear the negative as much, you know. In our present landscape guidelines, for permitted projects, artificial plant material is not allowed, unless that was changed recently.
What's that? I don't
In our present landscape guidelines, artificial plant material is not allowed, and this, you know, of course pertains to permitted projects.
And the key there is that there are, most typical single family residential projects aren't probably going to fall under that guideline. That's going to be a larger commercial project. The typical single family home renovation will not be under the umbrella at present, and so they would be able to make that choice. Under current law, obviously, council can change.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned permitted projects.
All right, team, we better wrap it up, right? Thank you, Planning Commission, for being here, we so appreciate all your hard work and
Thank you for having us.
Wonderful ideas, yeah. Come again, please. All right, we'll adjourn.